Trustee Zia.
I don't know if my mic is on, I think it is. Thank you Greg. You and I and Ginny and the rest of the board have been working on this issue. And I appreciate you guys taking it seriously. It's a great start. I have a couple of questions on the resources. Well, one, how are we getting out the word about these resources? The reason I ask is that I have a lot of students who connect with me personally and ask, "Where do I go? Do we have a broad reach? Have we started a campaign where we're reaching out to the students?" I've got other questions.
So, that's a really good question. So, our first step in our broad reach was the creation of the video that we showed at the beginning is our first step, and then the creation of the flyers. So, our goal really is to ramp that up, providing the information. Right now, we provide the information at our centers. We work with our student life to get the information out through our student unions in spaces where students are. We also, in redesigning the website, are redesigning the website so we can take a student to "What are your needs?" And we've set this up so a student says, "I need help with," and we've lumped all of the resources together to make it easier. Because right now, right now on our website, a student has to know which program to go to to find the resource. And so, we're changing that to just put up front, "What is it that you need?" And then here are all the resources that are available.
And you mentioned as far as the transportation. Is that, what's the estimated timeline when we're going to roll that out? Because a lot of these students need assistance with transportation. And do we have a rollout timeline that we're working on?
So, our ASP president mentioned, we have been, we've been in conversation now for a year with Long Beach Transit. And, you know, I don't know that Long Beach Transit was prepared for a solution. Fortunately, our student trustee has done a lot of research and came to the table of providing information on where we could go. And so, we've, our conversations have been very productive. Our plan is, our plan is to have an agreement in place for fall, for incoming students for the fall semester. That's our timeline we're hoping to achieve by working with Long Beach Transit.
And what's your plan? What's the proposal?
Our, our hope is to provide a way in which we provide an opportunity for all students to have access to bus passes.
Okay, so like Cal State?
Okay.
Okay. And a couple of other resources that you may want to consider. Trustee Baxter and I have a scholarship for homeless students. And if we can broadcast that or ask folks to make recommendations, we're going through the application process in a couple, in a few weeks. Also, the LBCC task force that you mentioned, housing task force, I believe you were referring to the same task force that trustee Baxter and I started with the community.
Correct.
We also raised funds there from private contributions that funnel through our foundation associate group for basic needs. So, we may want to consider putting that on the resource action. I don't see, I think we, the pantry, the LBCC pantry, maybe it was in your presentation, but in the handout, as the students, where do they go on campus to get food or gift cards? I think it's up to $25 per student, correct?
Right. So, when we, when we, so the gift cards are, they come, they're available when they're available. The auxiliary had money that they set aside that we provided at both campuses. The, our goal is to centralize all of those resources in the Student Health Center, where we have the over the counter nutrition. So, it's just, it's easy, it's the one place you go for all of those resources.
So, where is the food now?
It's in the Student Health Centers on both campuses. So, here it's in the GG Building, so it's just downstairs. And then it's, at LAC, it's in the A Building.
Okay. And where is that articulated in these resources? I see food resources for outside of the campus.
Yes. No, that's a really good question. We will update that and capture that.
That would be great, because that should be their first point of contact.
Yeah, I think, I think our assumption when we were creating is that we would catch them and we would know that. But the more we get this out, you're right, we won't necessarily have that initial contact.
Right, that should be their first stop. And then showers, I know there was legislation passed that we're going to have to provide showers. How, how far are we in implementing that in the college?
So, we, we completed, we brought together a task force to put together the draft board policy, ministry regulation, and it's in the process. So, it'll go next to, I presume, to the President's Leadership Council for review, and then it'll come to board. So, it should be here at one of the next board meetings.
For the showers. And then as far as the number of students, do we need, how many we have had reach out to us? I believe you said double the students.
So, for the over the counter, over the counter nutrition, we had 55 in the spring semester and we saw 110 in the fall. So, we doubled the number for fall. We anticipate that will continue to grow. For, we started the LBC Connects program in the fall. We saw 50 students, so we anticipate that will continue to grow as well.
Okay. And lastly, I just, have we called these resources to verify their existence?
So, as, as I mentioned, we do not put them on there unless we have called and verified. And we only verify that they're there, we verify that they're accessible to our students. And then we, and that conversation, see how we can gain priority for our students.
Okay, because I was under the impression, or I was told, that under, Central Shalom is no longer around.
Okay, I'll confirm.
You might want to, the website is up, but I was just notified that they're no longer available. But if we can continue to check, make sure these resources are available.
Yes.
There's transition in place, just for the benefit of the students, this is a wait list. I've had to write a recommendation letter for a couple of students, one of, and it's actually helped the student come from the bottom of the list up. And perhaps we can consider looking at that. But I'm not sure how available it is to, or how, how much vacancy they have, but we may want to consider looking into that, find out.
If there's a way to.
Yeah, just, or make a caveat in the listing that this is.
Well, and, so in this, our hope is, as you'll see the flyer on the LBC Connects, our hope is that as students are navigating, that they'll come in and so that we will be able to map this plan out, so help them figure out. Because one of the challenges, one of the challenges is that typically when a student is facing one of these issues, they're facing multiple at the same time. And so, it's hard to, it's hard to take a step back and put together a plan that considers all of those pieces. And that's what our LBC Connects can help them do. Think through, okay, let's start with food, start with, you know, start with housing. Where are they close? How can we coordinate these pieces together?
Okay. And just one last thing, as far as, I mentioned the scholarships, but job assistance, one thing, one resource that we may want to also add is unions and apprenticeship. We have a pre-apprenticeship program that we run through the college. And I've spoken to a couple of union halls and they welcome our students with open arms for job training. And we may want to consider putting that as part of the resources.
Cool.
For job, for job training. Thank you for a great presentation.
Student trustee Lamelli, did you want to say something?
Yeah. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I really asked for this presentation a while back now, and I'm really excited that we were able to get some, at least some preliminary numbers on what the usage are for these specific services. I did have some questions, and I sent the questions to you all earlier, and thank you so much for answering them through our presentation. But some specific questions, when we go to the number of the slides for the medical health services, or if you can go back to any of the slides.
This one here.
Did we actually go to the one earlier? Some specifics, what kind of support groups do you offer? What do they specify in the background?
Yeah, so so far, we have men's and women's group. And then in the future, what we're working on right now is to have more support groups. One of our students, one of the projects that our student interns are working on is to have a student support group for DSPS students, actually, because it's hard enough for them to navigate the resources. So, that's something, planning, so we hope to roll that out as soon as spring, but that's something. And so, there's a lot, we want to have, also a big thing is tangible skills, so I know access, so we want to have support groups that can teach you more tangible skills, or life skills, maybe even just dealing with the daily stress, because, you know, we have students from all walks of life, so being able to navigate that. So, those are things that we're in the planning phase. So, if not spring, hopefully fall. Any more questions about that?
Yeah, if you can go to the next slide. The total number, so we're looking at the appointments for the fall of 2016.
Yes.
We're looking at a total of 548 times utilized. Are we looking at that number, does it reflect the first time a student used or took advantage of the six sessions, or does that count after they took advantage of all six?
So, it's all appointments. So, when you look at that, so basically, if you look at the six sessions, right now our model, as you come in for initial intake, we're actually rolling out a new system right now for phone appointments to be more efficient. But that number from fall reflects the intake, which is the first appointment, and then thereafter six appointments. So, for, so for a student who comes through and sees us for the whole process, they would see us for a total of seven times, intake plus six sessions. So, that number encompasses all the different appointments. And some of that number also encompasses crisis same day walk-ins as well.
Okay. And for those students that make over the phone appointments, what do you estimate to be the usual wait time for the service?
So, you said over the phone?
Or the type of appointment.
Okay. Yeah, so actually, for fall, there was no wait time, so because of our, you know, we're trying to, we have more student interns, things like that. So, in terms of typically, you know, in the beginning of the semester, if you call in, you can be seen if you want to that same week, unless you have a preference for the fall week. As far as I know, anecdotally, the longest wait for a student who is not urgent would be approximately a week. But if they're urgent and they're coming in, they're feeling suicidal, you know, they're really distressed, not functioning well, you know, we make, I would see the student same day. They're not going to wait for a standard appointment.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions?
Trustee Malauulu.
Thank you, thank you, Board President Baxter. Thank you to Vice President Greg and the staff. You guys have done a terrific job. It's a very thorough presentation. I really appreciate it. I wish everybody could get that information right away. It's just very valuable. I have a couple of questions and some comments. First of all, for Dr. Law, only because you were just at the podium, I'm curious to know if you had more, you know, activity in November with students feeling distress and anxiety because of the election than throughout the rest of the semester.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing them, definitely. So, some of you may be aware, we offer some workshops that were in plan, given the, basically the political climate, we offer workshops to give students a space to debrief about that. And personally, students who come and see me and also the interns I supervise, definitely it's a real concern, thinking about, as we all know, there's a lot of uneasiness in our country right now, for particularly, you know, certain student populations. But yes, I did see more students. Even if they're ongoing, they didn't come in and see me for the, you know, the top, you know, anxiety, depression, stress, they'll mention it, like, "What does this mean for me? What does it mean for me?" Even being a citizen of the United States, for example, so that, that has come up in our conversation, even though that was not the initial reason why they came in to seek services. So, definitely.
Are we, are we providing support for them outside of the college after those six sessions are complete, or do we just send them out into the wilderness? Well, what can, I mean, I imagine six sessions is probably great, but maybe for some students the tip of the iceberg.
No, definitely.
What happens to them after that? Is there a community partner that we have that can assist them?
Right. So, as we kind of alluded to earlier, basically, if they need more than what we can provide, and that's how, because students wait, maybe plan on seeking the six sessions, or maybe they don't come back, or maybe, you know, on average, students come and see us about three times. And so, if they need more than that, and from the get-go, you know, we, when we, in the intake process, we identify what are your needs, what can we actually treat or help you cope with during our time limited model? And if you need more from the get-go, helping them connect with a, with a community partner. So, a lot of it, we refer to, for our Medicales students, for example, a lot of it goes to MCA. We refer a lot to, you know, locally, especially a lot of, we see a lot more students at LAC. So, locally over there, we refer a lot to the Long Beach Mental Health Urgent Care Center, because it's nearby on Paramount. So, a lot of that, but we have, again, it's listed in our flyers as well, but we definitely do that. And depending on the readiness of a student, you know, if they need more handholding, for lack of a better term, we provide that. I'll make the calls, I'll call the providers for them if I need to. Or if they need more intensive than that, we can, other than the therapy part of it, they can connect with one of our LBCC Connect interns and they can help them with that as well. If it's even helping them, you know, file paperwork to sign up for affordable care, and things like that, so we can direct them that way.
Thank you, thank you. Nurse practitioner Palacios, I have a question for you. With the volume of students that you see for regular physical ailments, I'm wondering, because I understand, you know, and I know that the law is, you know, probably going to change very quickly, but students are eligible for health care under their parents' employer up until age 26, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
So, what happens to a student who has that dual coverage, whose parents provide them with the medical benefits, but also are our students? Are they still eligible to come? And then also, what about students who are parents? And later on, I'm going to talk about the care event on December, I think it was the 19th, you know, where faculty was assisting student, our LBCC students who have children. But what happens to a student who comes to you who is a full-time LBCC student who also has a child, but does not have other health benefits? And, you know, I know California Children offers provisions for the kids, but do we get involved in that? Is that not something that we do?
That's such a good question. I haven't actually had anybody approach me about that. Sometimes they'll have, they'll have Medicales for their children, a lot of them will have Medicales for their children, and so then they can find a primary physician for them. We do have resources in the community for them, lower cost clinics for them, and we're finding that those are hard to come by. Some of them have shut down, some of them have been taken over by an HMO. So, that's kind of a challenge on that. As far as the first question, they can certainly access the care through us, regardless of whether they have insurance through their parents. And of course, everything is confidential, completely confidential, and that's a common question that we get, especially regarding sexual health. But they can certainly access all the provisions of care that we provide, regardless of whether they're covered by their parents.
Got it. So, we don't turn anybody away because they already have their, got it.
Not at all, not at all.
That's good to know. And I know that I have had students who've had that situation, who said, "I don't want to go see my parents' doctor."
You bet.
"Because, you know, my doctor has a big mouth, he's going to tell my mom."
You bet.
"So, I'm going to go to the health center."
Yes, that's quite common.
But I wasn't sure if they're right, pursued it.
Yeah.
Thank you. I have a couple of other questions. I'm not sure if it would be for Dr. Peterson or Dr. Knox, one of you guys. Let me just shoot them out there. Okay, what is the fee that students pay? What's the annual fee that students pay?
Nineteen a semester.
$19 per semester, okay. And your budget, your overall operating budget for the health center and the health services, what is that? And you can tell me later, because I probably just.
Tell you later.
Just, I'm just curious, because I'd like to know.
Of all my preparation, I didn't think of that one.
That's okay. What percentage of that, and again, later, and probably our acting superintendent president, she's really good with numbers, so she might have that answer. But I'd like to know a breakdown of your budget with that $19 per student, what percentage of it goes to payroll? What percentage goes, because you've got two full-time staff, plus I know there's a gal up front, and then, I've been down there, I took a visit down there. So, you have two staff members, and I've met them. But what percentage is a payroll? What percentage is your operating budget in terms of what is necessary to operate the business? And trustee Zia asked about, you know, including the homeless students into the services that you provide. And I know that we also have services that are separate for veterans, but what percentage of the students that you see are veterans? How much of the resources that we provide for LBCC students is actually for veteran students? Because I know we have the VA hospital, and I know we have other services to them, but I'm curious to know if there's any overlap and what we're doing for that.
So, there definitely, so when you talk about primary care.
Anything.
So, we're talking about primary care, most definitely is overlap. We do not, we can go back and look, we don't require students to self-disclose as are visiting us. We can go back and look at, track down the student ID and see that percentage. As for mental health services, we have some really great partnerships with the VA. So, we provide in addition to our health services, we provide specific health services for our veterans. Where the VA, we provide office space and the VA provides the professionals to come here on campus.
Perfect. That's really good to know. Okay, and then in terms, back, back to the housing issue, trustee Baxter and I, I don't remember where we were, we were somewhere, we had a, I can't remember, we've been so many places. We had a really lengthy conversation about housing changes in the horizon for community colleges. And California is one of probably very few states that doesn't offer housing for students. There's so many other states that have housing for community colleges. So, I don't know if that would, if that would fall under your domain at the college, but it is something that we'd be very interested in exploring if you, you know, happen to come across information or research and you can bring it back to us. Our past superintendent president, who's now the chancellor, he and I had conversations about that, integrating international students and providing housing for international students. So, any information that you can bring back, I would really appreciate. Is John Pope here? There he is. So, this would be a great opportunity for that communications program that we're looking into to get the word out to students. John has been doing a lot of research on a way to reach out to you guys out there via text or email. And maybe if we just send a daily text saying, "Hey, do you need a flu shot? Come on down." Or, "Mental health, you know, you get six visits." So, this would be something to help get the word out, the flyers and the video. Students today respond to texts. Students today respond to social media. So, we have to be responsive to the way they, you know, interact. And I think John has made some leeway, and in the future, he's going to let us know he's looked into several companies, and we're just trying to figure out what we can do. And the last thing I want to say, I just got the budget, I told you she was good with numbers. So, the revenue is 1.1 million, and you know, you should do it. You should provide that. I have one more thing to say to you guys. Go ahead, the budget.
So, the budgeted revenues for the Student Health Center is about 1.1 million. The salaries are 648,000, which represents 51% of the budget. Benefits are about 287,000, which is about 25% of the budget. So, overall, we're spending 74% of the budget on our salaries and benefits of our employees that are serving the students. Supplies are 60,000, that's about 5%. Services are 274,000, which is about 21%. And then we have a minor amount for equipment, just under, just under $5,000 for equipment.
That's good, that's good to know, thank you. The last thing that I want to just share with you guys, and I think I mentioned this at a previous board meeting. I had a journalism class a couple of years ago, and I had a student, in fact, I do remember mentioning this, I had a student who, because I'm a mom, I recognize a stain on her blouse. It was a telltale stain, and I knew that there was something going on. And I pulled her to the side, and I said, "Are you okay?" And she said, you know, it was mid-September, she'd had a baby at the beginning of August, and she was nursing. And she says, you know, "I don't have anywhere to nurse my baby." So, she had a baby, and her boyfriend, her husband would drop her off for an hour and 45-minute class, and then she'd take a break, nurse the baby, and then he'd come back and bring the baby, which is something my husband did for me lots of times. And I asked several times, do we have a nursing mom's room? Do we have a room for that? And I was very pleasantly surprised to discover that, here I am asking, you know, "Do we have a room?" "No, we're not sure, we didn't know." And when I toured the health center, we had a room, and it's been used for that purpose, and it's been used for several other purposes. So, students who are moms, you know, new moms, who have to express or have to feed the baby, there's a facility for them. And that makes it great, because we've got a lot of parents who want to go to school, but they have, you know, those are very viable needs that they have. So, thank you for that. That was, that was something Ann Marie and I found just walking through the building one day, like, "Oh, really? This is what that room is for." So, thank you very much for that. That was a great presentation, I really appreciate it, and I hope our students really benefit from that. And welcome, Dr. Knox. Thank you.
Trustee Otto.
Yeah, I want to, to thank you for what I thought was a spectacular presentation and the amount of services and things that we offer our students. The really remaining question is what was brought up earlier, and that is, how do we market that to our students? And these fact sheets that you've prepared, which are pretty exhaustive already, I think we're going to get the ball rolling in the survey. I suspect that there are very few students who, at this moment in time, know that these services are available.
Right.
And these opportunities are available. You know, we like to say at Long Beach City College that we're all about student success. And the things that are being offered here and lead to student success, it's not just measured by graduation assistance from one semester to the next, by transferring to another institution. Students can get the things that they need to be successful. We've talked for the last year or so, and we're talking at the statewide level about the cost of textbooks. Very difficult to afford, something like 60% of students don't buy their textbooks because they can't afford them. These services are a tremendous asset, it's just what the doctor ordered for taking the edge off issues that can really interfere with students' abilities to study, go to class, get to school, and so it's tremendous. And I'm looking forward to where this is going to go, because right now, you've had a great, co-convenient effort to get all of this stuff started. And I've listened to all the questions that have been asked, and there's been a lot of information that's probably provided tonight, which I hope can supplement what it is that's going on now. But congratulations and looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Ellen?
The, I agree, and that's, it's going to take along any longer, but it is amazing what the community college provides to the students. There's not a classroom environment, it offers, so the timeliness of this presentation, what we can is valuable for our students and what services we do offer to help a student be successful. There's a lot more to it than just riding in a classroom. In response to the question about, I've heard about within the community college system in California, there is housing that takes place. Historically, it's always been at rural community colleges. Reedley College, which is outside of Fresno, TAF, which is outside of TAF. Colleges such as that offer housing to their students, and it's very restrictive in many ways, but it does exist, but historically has not been in, it's been more in a rural environment rather than an urban environment for multiple reasons. Anyway, thank you very much for the presentation, outstanding job.
I have two questions. Number one, I, I don't think I heard the word faculty. And what trustee Zia and I have found out is most referrals come from the faculty, because students are more likely to speak to them about situations in their lives. And so, how are you getting the word out to the faculty? And number, that's number one. And number two is during flex days, do you offer these kinds of presentations to the faculty so that they have that opportunity to hear that, you know, what's going on?
Yes, so, so I just put that down as that we need to put together a communication plan to better communicate with our faculty. And we are very open to providing workshops and information. Flex day is a hard day to get on because there's just so much information.
Yeah. Mine.
Oh, nice. So, we do have an ASH that I provide them, you know, I rent to fall, and then also for spring, we'll have upcoming ones. We have for faculty and staff, though, I have to say, more staff attend than faculty at this time. I know it was a small size, sample size of last fall. But we offer, you know, for our staff and faculty to attend, working with distressed students. So, again, identifying, again, like you said, there are gateway holders, right? I mean, if they're likely, they're not sure about services, I don't know if I'm going to trust a psychologist who's sitting in that office, so, but I trust my professor, so let me go ahead and tell him or her what's going on, and they can be the one, you know, actually, no, Amy isn't so scary to go to. But yes, we do offer those kind of workshops to inform them of our services. And then, and we also take requests, so sometimes different departments will request us, "Can you come and do your presentation of our services? How do we access your services?" And things like that. So, just to briefly talk about that.
Here's question number two. You talk about LBCC Connects, but you have not hired a full-time person to, have you? Or have you hired a full-time person? And when are you going to hire that full-time person to run this program? Because I don't know who's doing the, is it just interns doing the intakes now?
It's our existing, it's our existing staff with our.
Yeah.
So, we, so our director of student health services, student life, Jeanne Durvage, working with her team. her team, have put together a proposal, and we are hoping that we can take that proposal to some of the, to the Student Success Committee for next year's consideration.
Are you talking about next year, July 1st?
July 1st.
Okay. Because that, if you could do that, I'll really be impressed.
President Baxter, I failed to mention, on this resource list, you might want to also add Jewish community, excuse me, Jewish children and family services. I sit on the board of the Federation, that's one of the agencies that we support, and it's not just for Jewish families, and I made a request that they make priority our students.
Great.
So, but they just need to, somehow, if you can connect the two.
Perfect.
That way, they, our students have that resource as well.
Thank you, thank you.
And they don't only serve Jewish, they serve the entire community.
Great.
Did you have anyone? Did, I attended a faculty training for PTSD and the brain injury student, was that something at your office? It was a couple of years ago, it was above the library in the L Building, there was a, a lady who was a high-ranking military officer who did the presentation. Who, who did that at the college?
It's, you know, it's long enough ago, I'd have to go back and, and do a little research.
Well, I was, I was the only faculty member in the room, and there were about 20 staff members in the room. And it was, it was geared toward identifying and helping PTSD students or brain injury students, and she had an hour, hour and a half-long presentation, it was one of the flex days.